The City Council's Committee of the Whole Budget Hearing, Day Two. It is now five o'clock on June 23rd. I think we left off with Comptroller's Office and Pat Burns. In the meantime, I will be trying to admit as many people who are joining in. But in the interest of time, Pat, you can get started, sir.
Hey, thank you, Mr. President. The Comptroller's budget saw a reduction of one FTE this year. This created a vacancy, and that was cut from the FY21 budget. The OTPS budget is pretty much status quo from the year before, except for the movement between a few line items of about $600.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council? I know we're joined by Counselor Letterman, as well as Counselor Allen at the moment. There might be some other counselors on the phone. If you could just raise your hand in the queue. And if everyone else who is not speaking can put their phones or whatever devices they're on on mute, it would be greatly appreciated. Are there any questions from the council? Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. Pat, yeah, just one quick question. And that is, to what do you attribute the ability to operate on one with one fewer person?
We've been this way since September. And, you know, we had to make some adjustments with duties. And everyone thankfully pitched in, and we were able to get things done. Granted, we're not getting them done as quick as we were in the past, but we are keeping our schedule for the most part. And we've... Credit to my staff that they've stepped up to the plate and gotten things done.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Allen. Are there any other questions from the council? Seeing none, we will move on to the Treasurer's Office. And Steve, we will miss you, sir. And congratulations on your new assignment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, Counselor. The Treasurer Collector... Now, I don't even know how to proceed. The Treasurer Collector budget has remained fairly service level. FTEs remain the same. I don't have any openings. I don't have any need for any more people right now. The Collector's budget increased slightly by about $1,900, largely due to the registry of deeds increase going up 40%. Instead of $75 to record something, now it's $105. And they started that January, I believe, this year. And treasurer-wise, it decreases slightly, mostly attributable both parts to the non-Bardi and Cola adjustments that were made citywide. And other than that, we're pretty good and moving along at what we have.
Thank you. Are there any questions or counsel... I mean, questions or comments from the council? Or Steve?
It's President.
I did hear someone who may be on the phone. Counselor Letterman, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Mr. President. No questions, but I haven't had a chance to call Steve, so I just want to tell him I will also miss him.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. All right, seeing no further questions, we will move on to the internal audit.
Thank you, Mr. President. My FY21 budget is consistent with last year. It funds three full-time employees. OTPS is comprised mostly of external audit service for the city's financial statement audit, which is nondisciplinary. The city is required to have its financial statements audited annually by federal regulations. That's it, pretty much consistent with last year. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. No? From the council, okay. Seeing none. This is much better than our city council meeting last night. Much quicker, not better.
We were stuck on horses for a while.
Okay, so we'll move on to Commissioner Helen Colton Harris in Health and Human Services.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors. Thank you so much for this opportunity. The Health and Human Service budget is level funded. However, there are some positions I was asked about. We... The nurse practitioner was cut, the community health nurse, too, were cut, public health educator. And so I should say that I agreed to cut those positions that were vacant at the time. The mayor has indicated, should I need those positions? That he is willing to fund them once they are needed. So they're not in the budget right now, but I do expect that I can have them back, should it be necessary. Other than that, there were no layoffs. Everything else is pretty much level funded in terms of my positions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Commissioner. We will move on to TJO, Ms. Peebles. Do we have Ms. Peebles on?
I certainly can represent the Animal Control Shelter, which you know is under my division. The Animal Control Shelter has been level funded for positions. One area that we are looking at in terms of being able to make some modifications is in IT and making sure that they can have the opportunity to have some upgrades to their IT system. That's being worked on now. But as far as positions are concerned, the positions remain stable. Obviously, you look at the rent that is being paid by TJO. We... That is a fixed cost, and we do not have any ability to modify that at this point. But other than that, things are pretty much as they were in the last fiscal year.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, thanks for the update, Helen. Just wondering how the Chickaby and Hoyoke reimbursements are going. Are they pretty current or running behind? Or is that any kind of a problem?
They are current. They are not running behind. As you know, we need to negotiate new contracts. The solicitor and I will work on that with the mayors. We wanted to wait until the Chickaby mayor was in place. That did happen in January, and then COVID came. And so we're a little behind in our process. But yes, we have received their checks from Hoyoke and Chickaby.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Allen. Are there any further questions from the council? Or the Commissioner? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Elder Affairs.
Good evening, everyone. The Department of Elder Affairs is level funded at $535,217. Supported under that budget are our salaries at $413,985. And the remaining $121,232 is OTPS lines. Any questions?
Thank you, Counselor Letterman.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Sandy, nice to hear from you. I'm just wondering, you know, sort of in the upcoming fiscal year, how you think operations at the senior centers and just the general work of Elder Affairs is going to continue to be impacted by the coronavirus? And how you think the current budget standpoint of the department will allow you to respond to that changing nature of your services necessary for your clientele?
Well, Counselor Letterman, if I had a crystal ball to predict this pandemic, I'd be making a million dollars, wouldn't I? I don't look into that crystal ball. What we're trying to do right now is live within the budget that we have. And we are finding ways to become very creative and doing some pretty meaningful outreach to our seniors in the community. I know that they are missing us and they are feeling isolated. But we are taking many steps to try to alleviate that sentiment for them. Moving forward, I see our rules changing and doing things a bit more remotely. And that's about it, as far out as I can go at this point.
Sure, thanks.
You, Counselor Letterman. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, we will move on to the library.
Hi, good evening. Nice to see you all. The library budget is pretty much level funded. We did have a part-time senior clerk position and a part-time page position that were vacant, and those are no longer in our budget. But we are very pleased with our budget. We have very... Our OTPS budget is honoring all our contracts. We have custodial contracts, security contracts, our CWR's contract, and very minor cuts. And we, right now, is fully funded, so that's great. You have any questions?
Thank you. Are there any, Counselor Whitfield?
Hi, Molly, how are you?
Good, thank you. How are you?
I'm doing well. I just wanted to know how your census outreach is going?
Oh, it's going really, really well. We've had... We have a lot of outreach coming up. Mass Live is going to be doing a lot of work for us. STCC Radio, WTCC Radio is going to be doing some more. We have PDT bus signs that are going to be going up. We were doing a lot of promotion through social media. So our Facebook Live is... We've had performances. We had a DJ doing a performance Saturday night promoting the census. So we have a lot of online virtual programs. We are giving out information about the census to all people that are picking up books with our curbside service. And we have flyers and a lot of paraphernalia that we're getting out into the community promoting the census. So work is very... The group is very, very busy. We've had... We've been on a phone bank, so some of our staff have been calling. People... They've been getting lists of names and calling and reminding them to sign up for the census. So I think it's going really, really well in a very short amount of time. Thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, a couple of questions, Molly. Are you keeping the same live... Same hours at all the branches?
Well, right now, we're not open to the public yet. We started out...
Contemplating, you know, when you reopen.
Oh, yes. Our budget fully funds all our hours, absolutely, yeah. So once we can go ahead to open, we have all our hours, yeah.
And what is the number of hours per branch?
Each branch is open 30 hours over six days per week, except Brightwood, which isn't open on Saturdays. Pine Point, the Library Express in Pine Point is only open 13 hours a week. And the Central Library is open 45 hours a week, about 268 hours a week, system-wide.
Okay. And how many branches does that apply to? Like seven branches, not counting Myrtle?
We have eight... We have seven branches, the Library Express and the Central Library, so nine locations.
Okay, great. And another question. We took over the Reading Success by Fourth Grade Initiative from the Davis Foundation. They were funding three years at 200 grand a year or something. Could you just give an update on that? Is that money in the budget? Is that tracked off to the side? How is that working?
Well, it has its own project code, but we just completed the first year and have done... I had to have meetings with Mary Wallacki before she retired, giving her an update. And I know Chrissy Howard, who is the manager of the program, just did a presentation for the Davis Foundation Board yesterday, in fact. So we're all set to receive the second payment, which will be the $200,000 going into the second year. We have... I can send you, if you're interested. Chrissy has done a really good presentation on reaching all the benchmarks that were asked for in the first year of funding. So the Davis Foundation is very pleased with the work. So we're moving along. We have had a few things that we couldn't do because things that were scheduled to happen in the spring obviously couldn't happen, but they'll be rescheduled for next year, once hopefully things are ready and normal again.
Okay. And did that $200,000 a year, did that entail hiring anybody? Or was that for... Was for other things, not hiring?
No, there's a full-time position, and it's the manager of Reading Success by Fourth Grade. Her name is Chrissy Howard, so she is a full-time.
So she's come... All right, I know Chrissy Howard. So she's coming out of that and reporting into your organization?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. All right, just wanted to be straight on that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, we will move on to Veteran Services. Mr. Bowen. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council President and Council members. We are level funded. We currently have two vacant positions for investigators, which we hope will pass muster, and we will be able to fill those positions because they are critical to our operation.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
Would it be possible to get a job description of those positions? Because I do know a lot of people in my area would be interested. They're trying to obtain work. So I do know, in this COVID epidemic, that I do have a few candidates. If you can, like, maybe send a job description to maybe me and my colleagues, so we can... If it's possible.
But I believe one of them is... Both positions are the same. One has been posted on the job opportunities with all the details to it. So the other one will be exactly the same as the one that's already posted up.
Okay.
TJ, can you... Can you make sure we get those descriptions? Or I don't know if Mr. Mahoney is on... Is on, or Helen? Thank you. Are there any further questions from the council? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Thank you.
And good health to all of you.
Same to you, Mr. Bowen. DPW?
Thank you, same to you.
Evening, councilors. DPW has two separate budgets. Our first budget is the General Fund. We have 80 full-time employees in that budget. All of those positions are funded. There are no departmental raises in the budget, with the exception of the Engineering Department, as they are the only group that has a contract at this point. So all other unions at this point do not have contracts. It is basically a level-funded budget within the General Fund. There are some increases in utilities, and then there is some reduction in fuel. But it's essentially a level-funded budget through DPW. On the Enterprise Fund side, 56 full-time employees. So we have 136 total. That department is seeing a 10.6% increase in our budget, and that is basically through one line item. We now have to pay for disposing of recycling materials. So we are adding a line item of $892,000 for recycling. On a separate side, we've estimated about $200,000 for revenue. Right now, there is no request for an increase in trash fee or bolt stickers with regard to the Enterprise Fund. So the big item within DPW is the increase tipping fee for recycling, and that contract starts July 1st.
Thank you. Chris, are there any questions or comments from the council? I do see an iPhone who has a question. I do not know who that is.
I believe it's me, Mr. President.
Is that you, Counselor Davila? Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Chris. Good to see you.
How are you?
Doing quite well. Just a brief question. You mentioned that there's no raises except for the Engineering Department because it's all along with the contracts. So what do we do once the contracts are signed? Are you coming back for more money later?
It depends when those contracts are signed and how much they are. So usually, we deal with finance separately. They usually have funds set aside for that. But none of that is in the budget right now.
Okay, all right, thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. Chris, just a question on recycling. So we had $892,000 or whatever for this year. We all knew that was coming. Is there any trend in the other direction? Or is it looking like it's gonna... You know, in the industry, is it gonna stay bad for a couple of years? Or is there any... What's the hope of getting rid of that?
Actually, just to give everybody a brief background, we were part of a consortium with DGP over the last 10-plus years. The DEP advertised last year. Their fee that would have been offered to the city was $145 a ton. We negotiated our own contract through a bidding process. We are the cheapest by far in Western Massachusetts at $119. The trend on recycling is gonna continue in the bad direction, at least for another four or five years at this point. The only good thing, though, is that we also put ourselves in position for a higher rate of revenue than other communities did. So we're probably gonna be looking at... Right now, it's a guess at about 200. But as we move into the future, we'll have more revenue associated with this. If we went with the DEP, we would probably be looking at about $100,000 worth of revenue. So we would be netting out at, you know, over $1 million. Now, we're netting out at about 600. But the trend is gonna continue. And it is not just Springfield. It's not Massachusetts. It's not Northeast. It's worldwide and countrywide at this point. A number of communities in the country are actually getting rid of recycling because it's cheaper. We only pay $70... Excuse me, $74 to get rid of trash. So we're actually paying about 45%, 50% more to get rid of recycling materials.
So the theory is, though, that we're still recycling. We're still separating.
Absolutely, yeah.
Even though some...
Residents won't see any change. We're still doing it the exact same way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counselor Letterman, I know I saw your hand up. Was your question answered?
It was, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Letterman... Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick follow-up, Chris. I mean, it's incredible that we are... Tipping fee is gonna cost us so much. But is there anything in terms of interstate money that we can hopefully round up to help with this? Because they are encouraging recycling, correct?
Yes, absolutely. Back in January and February, we had a number of meetings in... With all of the area communities. We're a single-stream community. We met with a number of legislators. And what the communities were looking for was state assistance because this is... You know, you're going from zero up to almost $1 million. So there was some talk of the legislature doing some assistance. And I'm guessing with the COVID that that went completely away.
Okay. Would you like to venture on taking a wild guess what the average yearly increase is gonna be on the tipping fee?
We have it set in the contract, maximum of 2.5%.
Okay, for how long?
Right now, the contract is three years with a three-year renewal on top of that.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. If there are no further questions from the council. Thank you, Chris. We will move on to Parks Department.
Evening, councilors. We feel very fortunate to be able to present to you a balanced budget, a level-funded budget, considering what we're hearing across the country. So the parks are moving forward with an $8.8 million budget. Facilities is at 2.9. And then we have an additional roughly $5 million on the school side for the school repairs. And to my knowledge, that has stayed level-funded as well. We are moving forward and preparing our splash pads to open. So there's been a whole different movement in the management of our parks and facilities due to the COVID. And for this year, we're gonna open 18 of the 19. Ruth Elizabeth's splash pad is actually in the process of being renovated. And then on the municipal side of schools, we have roughly $2.5 million. And some of work that is happening for improvements, they can range from anywhere from painting to new flooring to locker upgrades in the middle or high schools. And then we have about $1.5 million of work being done in our facilities with the Eversource Energy rebate program. And that continues to be successful. We have roughly over $12 million in park grants that are happening. We're very proud that we continue to be successful. 12.6 million in active park grants that are happening as we speak. And then we have another $5.5 million in grants that we're waiting to hear out. And with the grants, it's a team approach, is one example. It's a lot of work, and we put in probably 20 grants a year. And we have a good team, Pete Koochek, myself, Paula Thayer, Lauren Walsh, Carol Landman, Kathy Cavellies. We all work on these grants, too. And we are proud that we're pretty successful with them. And with that, I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Counselor Brown, followed by Counselor Letterman.
Um, I don't... Thank you, Mr. President. I don't really have a question. I just wanna commend... Commend him on his work. He's been doing a lot of great work for years upon years upon years. I don't think a lot of people understand what you do as far as on the state level. I commend you, and I really do appreciate all the work that you do.
Thank you, Counselor. It's a pleasure to work with you, much more.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Letterman?
I appreciate you, too, Pat, but I do have some questions. So I noticed in the... In the positions that are being cut, that were, you know, unfilled previously, between parks and facilities, you seem to have seven. And so I just wanted to check in to see how that decision was made, how you're feeling about it. And I had a specific question about also the energy manager position that looks like it's being cut. I'm just wondering, I presume that was something that probably found us some cost savings in the past. And so want to see how those cost savings will be found in the future.
It's never easy when you can't fill a position. But we also have to realize with the city of our size, we have to balance those decisions. So in this case, knowing that we're dealing with a COVID, we realize that certain areas will have to be picked up by our other management teams, and that's what we've done over the past year. So we strategically haven't filled a couple of those... A few of those positions over the past year, knowing that we have had to put money into other resources to keep our budget balanced. And with the energy management, we work closely with Pat Burns' division. We have a very talented young lady that works in that office. Her name is Cheryl. She does a great job. So that job is tracking the billing and so forth. And then we have Gerard Hernan and John Kerrigan and myself. So we still meet monthly, even though we don't have that position. Would it be great to fill it someday? Yes, but I think we have to get this... We have to have that peace of mind that we are... that we are going to be in a strong recovery mode before we fill those positions. So these are positions that you could fight, say, yes, they are essential, but knowing what we are facing with what's coming down the road for future cuts, we still don't know where the state budget's at. I felt very comfortable in working with finance and having to cut those for this year. And our management team will have to do that extra work to make sure that we're balancing those energy bills and watching that work. And I think we've had about a year and a half since we filled that job and I think we've done a good job managing without the position. Someday, though, we would like to fill it. So I don't want to take them completely off the table.
And then on the two-hundred-and-eleven cut to the summer help line item, I'm assuming those were summer jobs? And are they, were they related to the, the summer programs or what are those coming out of?
We agonized over the summer programs. We know how important they are to the families and we always take great pride in providing those. But after we read the governor's guidance of how to open pools, how to open summer program, it just wasn't able to be able to perform it at a safe standard. Where we are already working with finance and how to, uh, hopefully maybe when we reach a phase three, is there a way to do some type of, of an open gym program? And until we get the governor's guidance, we really won't have those answers. So we are continually looking at how we can do things differently. How can we do things for kids? We actually have worked with Lydia Martinez. We're gonna do a three-week session after the end of their program. We have some grant money that can only be spent through a potager of all. So we're gonna actually do a virtual enrichment program to go along with the school department's enrichment program this summer. So we're trying to do our part with the grant money again as we get it.
And I, I agree. I mean, I certainly think it's not feasible to do certain summer programs that we've done. It's as important as they are for, uh, community members. I think the other concern that I have around that, though, is also that that provided employment, um, to individuals over the summer. And I'm just wondering if there are any other areas outside of summer programming, the type which we might have done previously, but other temporary positions within parks that could provide similar summer employment to, you know, young people in the city.
With the equipment that we use on the park, it involves power. So you have to be eighteen years or older. Um, and then you need the training. So it would be impossible to do the training program in time for this summer. We feel the COVID is gonna go longer. Next summer, I'm praying that it doesn't, then maybe we don't have to work on something like that.
So the answer is no?
Right now, no. I just wouldn't have the ability to do the proper training to make sure that we're keeping everyone safe.
My last question is just the eight-hundred-thousand dollars in professional services and facilities. What's that for?
That is for the new Smith and Wesson range that is for our police department. So although leases come under the facilities division of parks, it's similar to the school department lease for states for Main Street property that falls within our, our budget.
Um, might have some questions on that later, but I'll yield for now.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Counselor Ramos?
Good question, Pat. What's gonna happen with Loom Pond this year? Is it gonna be open for recreation at all?
We are hopefully gonna be scheduling a neighborhood meeting there in about three weeks. We have a master plan that's been just about completed and we are going in for the state grant that's due in July. So we're excited about the potential for Loom Pond. Loom Pond, because of the phosphates, the high phosphate kind, you really can't swim there safely. And so our master plan moving forward will be to try to make that more of a fishing area for the city and then also continue to do the phosphate studies of why that kind of whole lake has that high phosphate.
There was a, there was some information that was provided to us by a resident last year. It was a study that was done at the state level that showed that the water at Loom Pond was actually cleaner than the water at Five Mile Pond and it was safer for swimming. Did you ever get that?
I did not see that study, but I'd be happy to look at it and be with our consultant on that.
Yeah, I'll forward that to you. But as far as it opening this year, is there gonna be any, is it, because I know last year it, it was fenced off after there was some.
I'm not gonna be comfortable opening that particular area. And again, until we have it properly renovated, have the proper restrooms on site and have the proper entrance. Currently, you've got the boat ramp off of Pasco and then you've got a makeshift entrance close to the auto body. And just with the disrespect of the amount of illegal dumping, we need to renovate this, close that Pasco road boat ramp and put the boat ramp within the park confines. And, um, once we have the proper area and place the proper restrooms, then it can be opened to the public again.
So how long, what are you thinking in terms of a timeline?
If we get this grant, we would be breaking ground next, uh, June and then it would probably be done by the, that fall. So hopefully maybe by the early, sometime next fall, we could reopen it for fishing.
I love the long-term plan, but I think we should also have a short-term plan.
I've been working on it for ten years and, uh, we have a very, we simply have to stay very eager to finally fund this project.
Absolutely. And I, and I appreciate all your work on it. As you know, the owner of the plaza there put up a fence, which helps with the illegal dumping, uh, all the way across Boston Road, the Boston Road side of Loom Pond. But I'm hopeful that we'll be able to have a short-term plan to allow people to, to, to fish there, um, this year.
What happens, Counselor, right now with the way it's set up, you have an old beach, so it encourages people to be swimming. And I do not, with Five Mile being closed for swimming, I do not want to open this and encourage people to be illegally swimming, uh, under these certain conditions. And again, the phosphate level is so high, I am not comfortable opening that until we have a better understanding for the safety. So I don't think it's safe to open this knowing, uh, what we have available to us. And I just wouldn't want kids getting sick or, or anything or a potential drowning. I have, we are not opening areas like that. Right now, it encourages swimming and it should be for fishing only.
I, I, I agree. And I agree. It's, it was, um, when I did a resolution last year on this issue, I cited the fact that this was a, one of the great swimming locations in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It was actually listed as one of the top eighty, eighty, I believe. Um, so I agree. And I don't, I don't necessarily think that we should open it right away for, for anything. Um, I just mean whenever things go back to normal, we do start opening up a Five Mile Pond, et cetera, then I'm hopeful that we'll be, be able to open it up for fishing.
All right. I, I hear you. We'll, we'll see how that can happen.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos, Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two quick questions, one for Patrick and then TJ. Patrick, as the counselor of the, uh, the jewel of the city Forest Park, I thank you for the great work you do. So I was being, uh, I always admire the park, even when it was a park ranger there. So you guys do a fantastic job. My compliments. Quick question, um, Pat, the ECOs program, my understanding that's not gonna be open this year? And if so, are those savings going to be for the school department or does that go under here?
The building, the maintenance of the, it's a park building, so all that comes under the Parks and Facilities Division. The programming that the school department does here comes under the school department budget. Historically, we ran a summer program out of that location, but again, with the current guideline for only having ten children in an inside location, it, it wasn't feasible. And then how do you tell sixty kids they can't attend a program? So that building will not be, uh, open for the summer season. And I have not heard how the school department is moving forward with ECOs for the fall at this time. So that will be up to the superintendent of the school committee. But what we plan on doing, while we've been closed with these, I've been working with TJ and Lindsay and Tim, we are, wherever we can save money, so on that particular building, like the second floor, we'd like to re-sand the floor down or screen it and then re-polyurethane it. We just completed the carriage house. So we're taking advantage of these slower times to make minor improvements to some of our properties.
Right, right, right. Well, the ECOs, the ECOs building, it's a beautiful, beautiful building.
Yeah.
A great view. It's really, it's great. It's, it's a compliment. So, uh, thank you, Pat. TJ, a quick, quick question for you, sorry, for me. Uh, referring to those eight-hundred-thousand dollars that Pat just talked about for the SPD shooting range, uh, I did see, um, in the summary, I think it was, that it was stated that we're gonna be acquiring the, the shooting range. Couple of questions about, is there gonna be a lease? Are we gonna buy it? For how long is the lease?
Right now, the twenty-year lease.
Twenty-year lease?
When all the build-out, uh, and the building to make sure it's retrofitted to allow us to have proper training for our academy and proper certifications for our officers. They need to be certified twice a year now under the new guidelines. So right now, they were firing in the basement of Pearl Street, which we didn't like because they were kicked out of their last firing range just because they didn't have enough, um, time to accommodate the needs of the police department. So it made a lot of sense with the firing range that was closed, retrofitted, make it state-of-the-art and, uh, have it, have that be a training area as well.
Create an indoor area.
Is that, is that the Smith and Wesson building?
Correct. Not, not two ninety-nine page, I believe. Boulevard's second to the address, but it's the same Smith and Wesson building.
Okay, uh, so what, maybe this is a question for the commissioner of property, but can you tell me what's, what's, what's the matter with the current arrangement that we have for the, for the shooting range? I know it's uncomfortable as the basement of the police department, but, um, it is, I'm, I'm thinking it's a hefty, hefty amount. I'm just trying to think.
Yeah, it's actually.
What's the necessity right now?
Not a hefty amount for what the build-out and space that they're getting in terms of a office space and training space and the number of officers that need to go through, uh, the training. And also, it's gonna be a revenue maker because there's no other, uh, not many, I should say, other firing ranges that can accommodate the needs of the training of all the officers and all the police departments. So we're looking at this as possibly offsetting revenue, uh, for that as well.
So are we gonna be renting the range for all the police departments?
We'll, we'll be working towards that. So we're hoping in November first, we'll be, we'll be in the building. I'm not sure exactly if we're on time to schedule, but I gotta double-check on that. Uh, then once we're in the building and we know our uses for it and how often we need it, we will then, for any time we have extra, extra time or space, we're gonna rent it out.
No, the last question on that, TJ, I hear shooting range and I hear noise. Is there gonna be any kind of impact to the community? Though I think that's work too, if I'm not mistaken.
No, what was the question? Will there be an impact to the community? No, no, no. This is used for the same purpose as before. Yeah, it's not known impact to the community. It's actually a good spot or it's centrally located by the city. Uh, it just makes a tremendous amount of sense for us to have access to it for our officers.
Right. And I'm just thinking of the traffic flow. It's gonna have enough parking spaces for all the officers that are gonna be going in?
Well, I believe it's a hundred parking spaces for us to have available and access to. It's gonna be fully gated off, uh, for access for police personnel only. So it's gonna, it's gonna be, uh, really impressive building once it's, it's not just one firing range. It's all three firing ranges to do training simulations and everything as well.
Okay. Um, okay. Thank you, TJ.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. We have Counselor Allen, followed by Counselor Letterman.
Uh, thanks, Mr. President. Um, the one question I have on that eight-hundred that has already come up a couple of times, is that eight-hundred into this account from the police account? Is that how it's gonna work, TJ?
Uh, no, Pat Sullivan and his team are gonna pay all the lease payments for the building when the invoices come in based upon the way we do it with all of our other buildings.
So it'll be, it'll come out of Pat's budget?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and my other question is to Pat, on the CPA, uh, we're in the third year of approvals. I don't know if they've been approved yet this year, but, um, does your staffing allow for the support that, um, for the CPA projects?
It, it does. Uh, we, thankfully, we got our second park player hired this, at the end of this past fiscal year. So we are, Chris Seabrooks, he's doing an excellent job. So he's working with Laura, myself and Pete. So having that extra personnel will accelerate, uh, either award grants going out.
And what was the name of that person?
Chris Seabrooks.
Okay, thank you. So Laura and that, and Chris, you said are the two people that mainly work on, you know, I'm thinking of Venture Pond and the Bike Path, thinking of my ward, but I'm sure there's plenty of other projects.
Oh, yeah, no, we've been, and Pete and I, the four of us go to the meetings and we work as a team, so we're doing well.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen, Counselor Letterman.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of more questions on the eight-hundred-thousand-dollar lease line item. So is that eight-hundred-thousand dollars a year for twenty years?
I have to look at that. There's a couple of escalator clauses tied to CPI later in the years, like maybe year five.
But it's gonna be, it'll be an annual expense. And then what's the, do you have any projected revenue on leasing it out to, or renting it out to other departments?
No, we just gotta figure out, like I said, what, when do we have vacant time to allow that to happen? That's a work. I didn't put any revenue in to the budget as part of the revenue assumption because we just don't know.
What did we do before, before we were in the, before officers were firing in the, in the basement of Pearl Street? Where were they firing?
I believe in West Springfield.
Say that one more time.
They were at Hot Brass, I believe, in West Springfield.
So they were going to a private facility. How was that financed?
Uh, actually, very good question. I don't even know how to figure that out.
Because I assume, I mean, I don't know if that, did they have an allowance to cover that cost or were people, were officers paying for it privately?
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get that answer.
Okay. Um, yeah, I, I want to know more about that. Thank you.
I just would like the councilors to know that the current conditions at Pearl Street would not lend itself to continue using that, that whole firing range. It's just not safe. It doesn't meet any standards. And you, you all know the age of that building. So this is really, uh, in my opinion, we needed to do this and it's about time we've done it for the safety of everybody, both that work in that building that have to qualify for that, that purpose of their life.
On that same line of questioning, TJ, on the, on the annual cost of, of leasing it, why don't we just buy it from Smith and Wesson? Like what are we getting out of the lease? Because I assume we're gonna pay the utilities on the building. We're gonna pay the maintenance on the building. We're gonna pay everything on the building. So why exactly are we leasing it and not just buying it?
To acquire that building, um, and then to ask to retrofit it with public procurement, public funding, uh, it was just cost prohibitive. The building that's attached to it, we're not taking that, you know, the owner's taken that down. We talked about it extensively and it just, uh, I mean, the cost to build the range was getting up beyond what we, we could afford in our current bond structure and bond capacity. And the urgency came out of this is that where else do you have an actual shooting range that's used to this exact purpose? Uh, and how do we get into a lease payment that makes sense for everybody involved? That keeps our officers safe, uh, their health safe. And, you know, when I found out that they were shooting in the basement of Pearl Street, it kind of, you know, freaked me out a bit just because of, you know, just down in the basement, I had to be down there. I hear, uh, it's just not a healthy environment to be firing like that. And they keep changing the number of times that need to be cert, officers need to be certified. And so we needed a state-of-the-air place.
Yeah, we certainly want our officers to be well-trained and safe and healthy. I think everybody agrees on that. I'm just, I'm just wondering about the financial terms of this particular deal. Uh, and so that, that was why I asked the question. So we're gonna cover, we're gonna lease it and then we're gonna pay to build it out. We're gonna handle the maintenance of facilities and it's gonna be a twenty-year lease. Am I understanding that correctly?
They, they're doing virtually everything with a turnkey of leasing it to us and letting us keep all the revenue that we can generate.
Oh, they're gonna renovate it? Okay, they're gonna renovate it to our standards? So we're not financing that piece?
Correct.
And then if we lease it out, we keep the revenue?
So they're saying they can do it in months when we would do it years with their contracts.
I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. Okay, that, I, I thought we were financing the retrofit as well. Uh, so that is, okay. All right. I'll check in with you about this.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. We have Counselor Ramos, followed by Counselor Davila.
My apologies, Mr. President. I thought I'd put my hand down. I, I was gonna ask the same questions that Counselor Letterman was asking. So I must say, thank you.
Counselor Davila.
Just a quick follow-up. Pat, how long have the police department been practicing in the basement now?
Well, they were originally, when the building was first built, and then I think around ten, twelve years ago, they had moved out. And then, I don't know when they had started up again, but, but it's just, uh, I, I remember calling TJ when I heard they might be using it again eventually. We do not want, we can't use this building for that purpose. That air system in that building doesn't allow it to be a, a practice range under the current standards that we need to be operating within. So that, that building just is not, uh, retrofitted at this time for that purpose. So this made sense and it's actually a very good price. When you look at what it would be to either replace a police station or renovate that current station.
When you look at what it would be to either replace a police station or renovate that current station, this is a very good deal for the city.
All right, thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Councilor Davila. Seeing no further questions from the council. TJ, did you get an answer to Councilor Whitfield's question with respect to the council cutting the line items?
I don't know, I didn't get an answer. I'm going to still look into her point that she made about line items versus the budget. The budget we adopt is that, according to the law, is that the personal services, the operations, and the capital is how we present the budget, and that's how it gets voted on. So the council wanted to make a reduction, they could reduce personal services out of the department's budget. They could reduce professional services or operations out of the OTPS, or they could reduce the budget.
TJ, can we get an answer to that? TJ?
Sure.
Thank you. And preferably before we vote on the budget, and preferably, preferably before the weekend's out. That would be helpful. If there are no further questions, we can move to, Pat, I'd imagine you covered facility and management as well?
I thought I covered both.
I thought you did as well. Okay, all right, so we'll move on to the school department. No, I let the superintendent in.
Thanks, Justin.
You're welcome.
How are you?
Doing well.
I'm on here with Pat Roach, my CFO. We've submitted our budget, it's a balanced budget. There was a cut after we finished it of $1.3 million because our summer school is going to be remote. So we cut 1.3 million out of the transportation budget for that, so that lowered it down from the 479 million to 205, 459 to 477, 858733. The all funds budget with all of our grants in is 552.6 million. It was a 5.9% overall increase from fiscal 20. And we took the Student Opportunity Act money, and we drilled 100% out of that money directly to our schools. So our schools got that money in their budgets. Now, we all know that that, that money's in question, and until the legislature acts, we just won't know if they're going to be able to spend that. They have spending plans at the school for running their program with or without the SOA, depending on what happens. We've built a lot of contingencies in our budget because until the legislature sets their budget, we're really not sure where we're going to be. Some of the major cost drivers in our budget is charter tuition, school choice, up 7.2% this year. It's a major hit in our budget every year. Out-of-district tuition for special education, which is mandated by law, and our retirement costs went up 10%. Transportation budget increase was, was going to be 7.9%. It's now only going to be 3.8 because of the cut made in the summer school transportation. But transportation's hard to control because every time they add a charter school or add grades to a charter school, you increase our transportation costs because they're all citywide, and we don't control it, and they get transportation provided throughout the whole city, which is a very expensive proposition. So veritas is still growing grades in Springfield Prep, so that's going to continue to go up every year. Some of our key highlights on the budget, some of the things we've been focused on with the school committee for years. We added 300 of pre-K seats, we changed from half-day to full-day. So we're offering a lot more full-day pre-K, it's better for parents, our outcomes are better. So we were able to do a lot with that, and we're going to get our reimbursement down the road for that improved. We are looking at providing more City Connect services. We didn't have all of our schools covered. We have 10 new schools this year, and we're going to cover that. And that's to provide wraparound services, to provide the proper mental health and other wraparound services families need. Some of the other key things is we added Imagine Learning for our ELL students. And we, we engaged in a parent-to-teacher diversity initiative, trying to move our parents along, get our parents along, get them the courses they need to become certified teachers. They usually become great teachers, and our payroll ranks are more diverse and tend to be folks who actually live in the city. So we're also doing some paid internships in our technology department for SBS graduates, again, to move more diversity into the ranks through that program. So there's a lot of positives in the budget. Again, we have a lot of contingencies in our budget. Also, should, depending on what the legislature does, we're prepared to adjust accordingly and have a balanced budget. Pat, what should I add? Pat Roach, anything else?
No, I think you covered all of it.
Thank you, Superintendent, thank you, Pat. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Letterman, followed by Councilor Davila.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, thanks Superintendent for the overview. I'm glad to hear you have contingencies in place relative to the SOA, as I know that's somewhat in flux right now. I just wanted to make sure there are no planned layoffs or cuts in terms of teachers, paraprofessionals, staff, anything like that?
Oh, we, we, we went without layoffs. Now, we don't, again, know what the legislature's going to do, but we, we would, we're, we're trying to go without any layoffs. So we're not going to lay folks off at this point, that's our point. Our plan is to do, if, if we have further cuts, we'll, we'll use, you know, attrition to help us get to where we need to get without layoffs.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Davila, followed by Councilor Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilor Letterman kind of gave me to the similar question I was going to ask, but Superintendent, by the way, the compliments on the meal distribution, I'm pretty impressed of the thousands and thousands of meals that we're giving out to the students and the family, so much compliments in that.
Thank you.
A quick question, one thing that did catch my eye was, you did say that some of the major budget drop, increase items are charter schools, 7.2% of the budget?
7.2% increase.
Oh, 7.2, okay, that increase is due to what?
That increase is due to the charter schools that are existing in the city are expanding the grades, so they're expanding the numbers, so they, you know, that, that grows every year, and that's going to continue to grow. And that's against the rules on our budget.
Can you quantify the amount of 7.2?
I can. Patrick, help me with this.
Charter schools and choice are going to be around 60 million next year.
Yeah.
16?
60, six-zero.
Six-zero.
Yeah, that's a huge number, and it's going up significantly every year.
No, Superintendent, my understanding is that if a student comes back to the
Sorry, Victor.
I think Victor froze.
I think he froze.
I cannot hear you, Victor. Did freeze.
There's definitely something going on with the internet in the city, because I was having the same problem all night last night.
So we'll go to Councilor Whitfield. Good thing I wasn't, Councilor Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Superintendent, for showing up and talking about your budget with us today.
Oh, thanks, Mr. President.
I appreciate you being here. So my question is, what would, what are the contingency or the backup plans if the Promise Act money is cut?
So if, if they don't give us the SOA, we took 100% of that SOA money and had each school take their fair share based on their number of students, and formulate plans on how they'd add to their staff or add to their plan with that funding. If they don't give us the funding, the schools won't be able to make those, you know, you have those additional funds.
So you would just have, you just have like a level plan, and then if you do get that money, then you add to that level plan?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay, all righty.
That was the safest way to do it, and the principals know that, that, you know, it's all based on what the legislature does, but they have a plan in place should we get the money. And then they have their regular budget in place, which is level service, so if they don't get it, they still have a plan in place to execute.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Whitfield. I believe Councilor Davila has rejoined us, so Councilor Davila, we will turn it over to you, followed by Councilor Ramos. Well, maybe not.
Oh, am I back?
Yes. You are breaking up, Victor. All right, we will hear from Councilor Ramos, and then we'll circle back around to Victor.
Thank you, Mr. President, this is Superintendent. A couple of questions. First, I, we don't, we don't have a breakdown of your budget as compared to the other departments that we have, so I'm going to be asking some questions that related to some line items in them, or your budget. What is the, what is the amount that the school committee spends on school resource officers per year?
About 1.5 million.
Do you have a breakdown as to how much the school department spends on school nurses per year?
Patrick, would you be able to give an estimate on the school nurses?
I will get that for you, counselor. While you're at it, if you can give me a breakdown as to how much you spend on school counselors, that would, that would be helpful as well.
With school counselors, Pat, you'd want to add the school counselors and the City Connects, the wraparound service, because they're doing the counseling work also.
City Connects is 3.8 million. I know that one.
School counselors, we have, you know, probably a few hundred almost, I'd say, so it's rather significant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ramos, Councilor Davila. We'll give you another shot.
Thank you, Mr. President, my apologies, I guess I got kicked out twice. Stole my life. But anyways, Superintendent, good to, good to be back. So you were saying 7.2 of the charter school increase translates to about $60 million. Now, it is my understanding that when a student comes back to the school system, that money doesn't follow them right away? And how long does that take roughly for that money to come back, and how does that affect the school department budget?
So, once, if a student leaves the district, we get a partial reimbursement for a few years, and then we, we don't get any more after that, because there's a lot of legacy costs we, we take on. So that, that can change, subject to appropriation. So it's, it's partial for up to three years, and then we don't get any reimbursement at all for the cost. If they come back to the school system, we'd, we'd get 100% of the funding. So sometimes students will leave to go to middle school in a charter school, come back to our high school. And they come back to our high school, once they're on the books, we'd get the count the next year for their 100% of the funding.
Okay, so it doesn't have a necessary negative impact on you, on the budget?
So, you know, when they leave for a charter school, it definitely has a major impact on the budget. But this year, it's up to $60 million.
All right, thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the council for the superintendent? Okay, seeing none, Superintendent, I actually have a few questions for you. Pat, can you get me a breakdown of professional development and the monies spent on professional development? And then also, if you can get me a count as to the number of individuals who receive that professional development?
Absolutely.
Secondly, Superintendent Warwick, I know your administrators are working extremely hard. I don't know if there's a way to reward them for their efforts, but I know certainly throughout the summer, they probably never anticipated that they would have to plan for either both remote, as well as potentially having students come into the actual classroom to be taught. And so I'd imagine that that is going to, it's going to be difficult, and it probably requires a lot of, a lot of planning that they probably wouldn't have ordinarily done. And so to the extent that we can reward them or compensate them, I'm sure they would greatly appreciate it if, if we're not doing it already. As I know some of them, who I've spoken to, are getting pretty burnt out, but certainly understand that, you know, it's necessary. So just, just a comment. The second thing
I'd just like to agree with you, Justin. Our administrators have worked extremely hard, and they've done an absolutely, they've gone above and beyond the call for us, and done an absolutely fabulous job. And our teachers have too, in reaching out to families. It's been a Herculean effort by everybody. And this is a very stressful piece for us to try to plan this opening. But we're committed to do whatever's best for our kids, given the infection rates at the time. So we'll have multiple contingencies, and we'll be ready to go.
That is excellent, and I didn't mean to slight the teachers, as I know they're working hard as well.
They're working hard too, and our, but our administrators have absolutely killed themselves, so you're so right on that.
That's what I was going to say. I know what it's like to have to lead, and especially during times like now, and I know the extra effort that the person who is in charge has to do. So to the extent we can reward and/or compensate them with something, I'm sure it would be greatly appreciated from them. Did we ever renew the contract with Volkley, Richardson, and Galinas this year?
Pat?
It has not, it has not been renewed yet.
It has not been renewed yet. Okay, so is there, is there a plan to renew that contract? And are we not saying it's renewed, Pat, because it doesn't renew until June 30th?
So it automatically renews for July 1st, and the school committee has not, it's, it's the school committee's contract with them, and the school committee has not asked for us to terminate the contract.
Okay, so if I'm correct, in FY18, we paid them 400,000 roughly. And in FY19, we also paid them over a half a million dollars. Do we know how much we've paid them to date this year, off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head, I don't, but I would guess it's around 400,000 dollars.
I would imagine you're probably accurate. Do you, do you also have an idea what is budgeted for them for this coming year? And to your previous point, it would seem to me that you probably would have budgeted the same amount.
I would budget it the same amount.
Okay, and so are, are you all aware that the same law firm that we, that you have been giving a half a million dollars to year after year after year recently filed a lawsuit against the Springfield City Council?
Yeah, we read that in the newspaper, yeah.
Okay, so Pat, on, on October 15th, you sent me an email in response to my inquiry stating that the, the contract ends on 6/30, unless you guys give notice or the school committee gives notice. I sent you an additional email and CCed Superintendent Warwick on April 22nd of this year, specifically asking whether the contract with Volkley, Richardson, and Galinas was being renewed. And if so, when and why, considering that they were engaged in a lawsuit with the city? Neither of you responded. And so I guess my question, and you might have answered it already, is that was there any discussion around not renewing their contract? And has this been brought forward to the school committee at any point in time? Sounds like.
No, we, we didn't hear any, anything from the school committee on it that, that I know of. Patrick, did you hear from the school committee on it at all?
No.
Okay, so maybe when I was emailing you Superintendent and Pat Roach, I probably should have been emailing the mayor, but you certainly, the two of you were well aware of my concerns and I, I, I guess I was probably overly relying on the fact that you would convey those to the mayor, as I'm sure that they don't know all of the contracts that, that you guys are committing to on a regular basis, and I have to imagine that they also did not know when this one was going to expire. I know we're probably a little late, and in fact, when I read the contract, we probably can't back out now without some sort of facing some sort of penalty. Because I believe it was 60 days. Yeah, to let them know 60 days in advance. And so it, it, it just, it is baffling to me that we are still giving that law firm who sued the city 500,000 dollars year after year. So I, I will, I will leave you with that. I'd imagine we'll probably hopefully not be having the same discussion next year, but to me, it is problematic that, that they even found themselves in that position in the first place. That that probably shouldn't have occurred. But neither here nor there. If we could look into it and certainly bring it to the attention of the school committee, it would be greatly appreciated. And I will do my part as well. Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, Council President. I want to follow up on that line of questioning, because I didn't know that. What revenue source pays that contract? Is it, um, does it come directly from the city revenue?
General fund.
General fund, general fund revenue, and the, the contract is just a one-year contract? It's an annual contract?
Yes.
And are they just our retainer for like when you, when you need their services?
It's, it's a retainer and then there is some other language when they take on special cases that either the law department or the labor relations department doesn't handle. It would normally fall under their areas.
When Counselor President Hurst brought this to your attention, what was the actions? Were there any actions?
When Counselor Hurst brought it to our attention, I shared the concern with the vice chair of the school committee. I believe we shared it with the mayor also, to see what they wanted to do.
And they wanted to do nothing?
I think, I, I, I can't speak for anyone else, but the law firm has done a great job for us, so they've, they've, you know, litigated a lot of things for us and really done a fabulous job. So there's been no push by the school committee to change the contract because they've actually provided tremendous services for us.
So do they have to go through a procurement process or you just keep renewing the contract? Because I'm, I'm pretty sure there's other great law firms out there that can do a great job if given the opportunity.
Pretty specialized field, so they have tremendous expertise within that field and have done a fabulous job for us.
I'm not taking away from their credit, but I know that there has to be other law firms that are great, is what I'm saying. And I wanted, the question that I asked was, is there a procurement process or do we just keep renewing their contract year over year?
It keeps getting renewed year over year.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the council for the superintendent? Seeing none, Superintendent, keep up the good work and we will move to Planning Department.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, everyone.
Good evening, councilors.
Sorry, good evening.
Council President, do you want me to review the, the planning department budget or do you want to just move directly into questions, given the timing?
This is early for us, but why don't, why don't you give us a, just a brief synopsis and then we'll open it up to questions.
Okay, well, it's a pretty standardized budget. Everything pretty much held normal. There are two areas that there were increases in. One is regards to planning. And that is with regards to continuing the planning effort around the area surrounding the casino, with regards to pulling together a master development plan for, as I think the council members are aware, there are a number of properties that are in foreclosure and there are similarly a number of properties that are in what I would say blighted or distressed conditions. So that is to continue that work. And then the only other increase was a small increase with regards to a planning conference that both Scott Hanson and Phil Dromey attend on an annual basis. That had previously been awarded or paid for by a combination of resources coming through PBPC. And that funding went into PBPC from Mercy and Bay State, and my understanding is that they're not continuing that anymore. That, it's the National Association of Planners that is associated with that conference and it's fairly important, I think, from an educational standpoint for the senior planners in the city to have that as a resource. And those are really the only other adjustments that are the increases associated with the budget.
Thank you. Tim, are there any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, thank you, Tim, and we will move on to the law department.
Good evening, councilors. The department budget is approximately 2.6 million dollars. 2.1 of that is salaries and balances other than personal services. That amount reflects a level services budget. The, there is one new position. There are no raises for anyone, but because of the body worn cameras, we anticipate a lot of legal work related to the review of body worn evidence, the redaction of parts of it, the response to requests for the information from the public as well as for the prosecution of cases. So we will have one new position that will work not only with regard to body worn cameras, but will beef up our ability to handle public records, which continues to be an area of large volume. And our support of the clerk's office, in addition, the position will help us as we respond to demands with regard to open meeting law situations and covering the various bodies and commissions and boards that we do. This body's seen a lot of need this past year. We've had where we, you should know that starting July 1, we're going to put a rotation in place. You know, you, you ended up being stuck with me basically because of the hiring freeze, but we're going to have a rotation starting July 1. Where Deputy Breck, Deputy Days, Deputy Deceased Sousa, as well as First Assistant Moore is going to be working in the rotation. And when we can get hiring again, we, we will change that rotation. That's essentially our budget.
Thank you, Solicitor. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hopefully this will go smoother than last time. Good to see you, Solicitor.
Good to hear.
Let's see. I don't know, Mr. President, today seems to be a bad day for technology. Anyways, Solicitor, I, I sort of lost you a little bit towards the end there. I've been having difficulties all day, but so you were talking there's going to be a rotation for the council, for the city, for the city council, correct?
Yes, we're gonna we're trying to allocate the, the time and the, the fact that we've got so many boards and commissions which need services now, particularly to the remote aspect of Zoom. It's just impossible to have any one lawyer cover them all. The council, we know that after July 1, you're going to be returning to some additional meetings for committees. So we're going to have to beef up our services in that area.
Right, now, is that hiring freeze that the city has, does that apply to the to the lawyer that we, we are short?
Yes.
Oh, it does. And within this budget, I see that you have an increase, if I'm not mistaken, of 121,000 dollars. Does that reflect the salary for the lawyer we are hopefully going to hire soon? Or?
No, there's been an additional $60,000 added for adding one, adding one public record, open meeting law, whatever else we can get out of lawyer. And we have a number of vacancies which we did try to post, or we did post in fact despite the emergency in the housing area. That is one area where the volume continues to build and we expect it's only going to get busier. The courts right now have limited the amount of hearings and, and matters that but that continues to build up. I get calls from people every day complaining about conditions on their property and we, we really need more bodies to help in that area.
Right, so so am I saying, so going back to the lawyer, the money to hire a lawyer for the city council on a full-time basis, it's allocated within this budget?
We, we don't have a full-time basis city council lawyer.
Or, or a part-time, or whatever arrangement was in the past.
Yeah, we have a part-time position Assistant City Solicitor that would be very helpful if we could get that filled. Hopefully we will and once we have our budget set and and that'll ease up some of the burden as we attempt to cover all the meetings for all the various boards and commissions.
Right, so that's, that's, so the money's already included in the budget for that position.
Yes.
Okay, right, thank you, Solicitor.
You're welcome.
Good to see you again.
Same here.
Thank you, Counselor Davila, Counselor Whitfield.
So Ed, I don't know if this is a question for you or if it's for TJ or if it's for the mayor, but, um, but we got 100 and what, $16,000 to pay for an associate city solicitor? But we don't have like 35, 33, $40,000 to put in the city council budget for our own personal lawyer if needed?
So unlike the school committee, the city council doesn't have power to hire its own lawyer. As you, you know, the Volkley Richardson contract, that's a school committee, that's by state law. They have the right to hire their own. On, on this side, the law department does it all. And we do have some vacancies. We do have a position slated to help out with the city council that has been on hold. We hope to be freeing that up shortly. The position that's vacant, that you said 116,000, that was our first assistant. That was attorney Kathleen Sheehan. She was one of our top attorneys and we sorely miss her. We have made attempts to fill that position with ads, even in the Boston area, trying to attract someone. It's, it's been difficult to find someone. Without that salary, we, we're not going to find someone of, of, in the area that we, we were looking for. The position that we had, if you recall, Clerk Davis, Attorney Davis had a position with the law department. We get that slated to be backfilled. But the person who's going to backfill it is needed in the housing court area and we haven't been able to make the move on that. The, and that's because we haven't been able to fill that position for the housing court. So it's a challenge. It's a challenge because the salaries are not the same as they are in the private sector. And there's restrictions on, on residency. I've been working with attorney Talia G. We have been trying to recruit extensively. And we're going to keep working on it. But hopefully, once we get through this COVID and some of these other challenges, we'll get fully up to speed.
Thank you for that answer. But can you answer this? How is it that you will be able to represent the administration and the council in a situation similar to what we're going through now?
You mean a lawsuit you're planning to file?
I don't know if we're planning to file a lawsuit or if we're going to settle or what's going to happen with that. I don't want to, I don't want to speak to that. But I'm, I'm asking you hypothetically, how can you represent the administration and the city council in the event that we, we would sue?
I would not be. I, we, the city would have to hire outside counsel to represent the city side of the equation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Are there any other questions from the council? Seeing none, Solicitor, it might be nice at one of our Thursday update meetings for you just to go a bit more in-depth as to what that rotation might look like. This clearly is my first time hearing it, so I'd imagine it's probably most other counselors' first time hearing it, and there might be some pros or cons, and there might also be something that we, we might add to it, especially since they are going to be working with us to make the situation a bit more, a bit better for the council.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Sorry, Counselor Davila.
Yeah, just briefly, Solicitor, I just want to compliment you on this idea of rotating the the, a lawyer for the city council. Hopefully it won't be who's going to get it short and let it stay for the day. But I I I do think that if we, I know you guys are busy, but if we can have, to have some consistency, if we can have them for as long as possible, you know, not for one day or for a week, for maybe a month or two at a time. So that we just have some consistency, because otherwise I think that could be a little bit of a calamity in terms of consistency and lots of communication.
Sounds like a plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. And I'm sure there are some other counselors that might want to weigh in at some point in time, so if we could just have that discussion, it would be appreciated, Solicitor. With that being said, we'll move on to building slash housing code enforcement.
Evening, councilors. The code enforcement budget is the code enforcement budget is pretty much status quo. Really no changes into it. Full-time employees, basically any changes in there due to contract negotiations requirements. The budget comes along with just the normal supplies and supplying the office and keeping the operation going. So basically, there is no status changes on any, any cuts at all. The only thing we have is just vacancies that we're dealing with as far as employees. We have five vacancies. One building inspector and four vacancies on the housing division side. One of the vacancies on the housing division side, we've got approval to go through the process and fill that position. We're currently working, looking at applications right now to fill that position. Any questions? Any questions?
Thank you. Steve, are there any comments from the council and counselors? If we could please mute our mics. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none. Only question I have, Steve, is with respect to the CDBG, and maybe it's a question for TJ, the CDBG money that code enforcement used to use, or used to receive to do the sweeps in the spring and summertime. I think one of the, one of my biggest frustrations was always that when you use CDBG money, you normally use it in the most impoverished areas. And so, and then in addition, when we have these sweeps, oftentimes, I believe, there was a police officer that used to go along with those, with those individuals. And so, we're now talking a lot about overpolicing particular areas in the city, and I'm just wondering whether that CDBG money was still, was received this year considering COVID-19, or not? And then what your thoughts are on continuing to use that money and the benefits of it?
Well, I'm not sure what's going to be coming for this new budget, but I think your facts are on what neighborhoods we're hitting with it. Proactive money is used pretty much across the whole city. And we do the street sweeps for every neighborhood in the city other than that may not be CDBG. If you look at the CDBG map, it covers most of the city. So there is no real hard target where it's getting heavily concentrated in one area. We try to at least sweep almost every street in the city that is CDBG during that year's time period. So if you want to look at data, we can show you data. We can put it on Hotmap. We can show you points of where we hit when we do the CDBG sweeps. But there's no real heavy carding of one, just one neighborhood. Inspectors try to lease it every street twice during that period.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not so sure I said every, I said specific neighborhoods. But certainly, I think I know what CDBG money is used for, and I'm not 100% sure that that, certainly considering what is happening in our society right now, that that might be the best use for it. So if you do get that money, TJ, if you could just bring it to the counselor's attention so that we can see what that money is actually going towards, and we know when it's coming before us, in the event that we need to, we end up approving that money, just would be helpful, because sometimes things fall through the cracks as we approve a lot of monies throughout the year.
If I might just add one issue to this. I think code enforcement in general is a healthy thing. The issue is that we need to beef up the resources to respond to the code enforcement. So it's one thing to hand out citations for code enforcement, but it's incumbent upon us to ensure that there's the necessary programming that's available to people who ultimately have to respond to those violations through the housing department and other departments. So I think, you know, as you're looking at this, one side of it is the citation, but people that live down the street are going to complain about code enforcement violations, and ultimately, code enforcement goes out, gives the violation. But the ability of that individual to be able to respond, to fix the problem, is something that I think we need to take a better look at and understand what we can offer as programming to make that happen through CDBG.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. Counselor Whitfield, you have your hand raised.
Yes, Steve, is there any notification in the event that you have to enter someone's property, like go into their backyard, or anything like that for a code violation, or you just walk back there?
No, we don't. There's certain right-of-entry laws that we have to look at. If there's open yards, it's visible from the street, generally the inspectors are going to take everything from the street, visible from the street. If a yard is fenced in, it's not visible, then there's a certain amount of privacy there. The Saturday sweeps are basically generally all life, all the life issues we're looking at, the guys that are going, you know, working on the junk cars, the illegal car operations on the weekend, the blighted houses, keep on track of. So we have, we have a database that the inspectors work on for blighted homes that we keep track of. Those have to be hit a certain amount of time to keep track of those. So the CDBG money is really about the quality of life. It has nothing to do with interior inspections. Most interior inspections are all driven by, in most parts, by complaints, tenant complaints against landlords, landlord issues, property condition issues, whether it's sanitary, electrical, building, plumbing, possible gas issues, no heat, no electricity. Those are all based on, generally, most of the time complaints is pretty tough to do with anything like that on proactive. So proactive CDBG money is really based on neighborhood quality of life.
Thank you. I have something else to discuss, but I'll follow up offline.
Sounds good, and it probably sounds, it seems that we probably should have some sort of subcommittee meeting around code enforcement, their policies in general. I know Counselor Gomez and myself had asked for a policy pre-COVID, and also a policy in light of COVID with respect to the workers, and what were some of the regulations and procedures that you guys were following, as we heard a number of concerns from employees and code enforcement. And so we have yet to receive those, those policies, and I know you're starting to go in to houses again, so it would be great for us to get something documented, which, which I think the Solicitor said he was going to get to us, but, but we haven't received it as of yet, which was a couple of months ago. So we certainly can talk offline. If there are no further questions for the Commissioner, we can move on to centralized dispatch. Thank you, Steve. Sorry, I am fired.
The centralized dispatch budget this year consists of a budget of $1,900,000. It includes a level service budget for the dispatch department. It allows us to fill the vacant positions we have and maintain a level service for the city.
Are there any questions or comments from the council? I see Counselor Letterman, followed by Counselor Fenton.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Commissioner. Thanks for being here. Thanks for filling in on dispatch. I'm just wondering when we think a dispatch director will be brought on board? And then the other question that I had was relative to just the position of the department right now. I know we had moved some funds around earlier in the year to cover OT. I know it's a department that's hard to keep folks in because of the stressful nature of the job. So just wondering what folks think lie ahead for the year?
Well, about, six months ago, I took over responsibility for the dispatch department. It was thought that it was best that dispatch report to me instead of TJ, because I had a better handle on the lingo that they were using, the general day-to-day operations. And I was one of the end consumers with Commissioner Clapproot of the services provided by dispatch. Since that time, the dispatch director chose to seek success elsewhere. So I've taken over pretty much the running of the whole department, and now I have one of my deputy chiefs overseeing it in a management leadership role through my direction. And then we have the technical experts in the dispatch department. So I don't believe we're going to be filling the dispatch director's role. We're going to be filling the deputy director of dispatch's role, who will be the technical director of the department, when the leadership will come from fire service personnel. As far as the overtime in the department, that was a runaway problem due to the continual rotating door that had developed in that department. We would hire people in the department. They would get halfway through training. They wouldn't meet the training requirements, or they finished training requirements, and they would leave due to the stressful nature of the job. So we've been trying to run more mini academies in dispatch, the same way we have been in the fire department, to keep their staffing up to a higher level so we can try to reduce the overtime levels in that department.
So you've, so the administration's plan is that you've restructured the department? Because previously, it was like a department head-level position that reported, I believe, did it report to UTJ, or did it report to the mayor?
Ultimately, it reported to the police commissioner, the fire commissioner, and the 301 director. The dispatch department was getting drowned out in their needs because the police department's needs were so great, the fire department's needs were so great. So the mayor moved it under me for a couple of years to kind of work through and get them set up for a new CAD system and get them some of the resources that they needed. Commissioner Calvi identified the work of Commissioner Clapproot, that it probably makes more sense to be under paramilitary or a uniformed division, just as a way to provide better oversight and be able to understand the needs a little better. So, yeah, about six months ago, the mayor pushed, put Jeremy and emergency communications under the fire department with the agreement of the police commissioner.
And you're going to now hire a deputy, what are you going to hire to head the dispatch unit?
One of my deputy fire chiefs is overseeing it directly for manpower or for leadership and management oversight. And then there is a deputy director's position that was already created. It was the number two in that department, and that's the technical expert.
Got it. All right. That's the first word hearing of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman, Counselor Fenton, followed by Counselor Davila.
That answered, that answered my questions.
Okay. Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good to see you, Commissioner Davila. I just want to make a quick comment and acknowledge the fantastic job that centralized dispatch has been doing. I think they have improved tremendously over the years. I myself have seen some of that a few times from my family, and I'm just impressed with the professionalism, with the, with the level that they handle the calls. And I'm just very impressed. I think we have a very good dispatch system in Springfield, and how they communicate with all departments and the ambulance. It's just fantastic job. I just want to make a polite comment that I'm pleased.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Davila, Counselor Allen.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. President. My question is along the same lines. BJ, I'm just confused on the people underneath you. There were always two direct reports, somebody who was more involved in the fire end of things, and someone who was more involved in the administrative stuff. That's my recollection. I don't know if you changed that. So is that still the case, that there are two direct reports of you and the person with the administrative responsibilities has taken over the dispatch? Is that what you're saying?
So I have two deputy chiefs. One handles operations, one handles staff services. Part of the staff services job is overseeing dispatch. That's pretty much his sole responsibility right now, because we're working on the merger to get police dispatch and fire dispatch under one roof. We've got a CAD project going on to re-implement a CAD, a new CAD for the system, with new CAD software, new CAD hardware. So it's a major undertaking that we're working on now to completely rebuild the dispatch center with new equipment, new software, new hardware, train up, and get new supervisors online, and get the department up to full staff so we can try to stem some of the overtime expenses we're experiencing.
Okay, so it is an extension of, of the responsibilities of the staff services person?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. If there are no further questions, we can move on to fire.
Okay, let me just change pages here. So the fire department budget for this year is $23,453,000. Over 95% of that is personnel costs. The remaining costs in the budget are for replacement of turnout gear, replacement of SCBA bottles that expire every 15 years, diesel fuel, heat, general OTPS funding items for the fire department. This is a level service budget, which enables us to keep eight-engine companies, four-ladder trucks, and the heavy rescue squad in service. And when we have peak staffing, we run the two tactical EMS vehicles, one out of Station 1 and one out of Station 3 on White Street.
Thank you, Commissioner. Counselor Ramos, I see your hand is raised in the queue.
Commissioner, thank you. Couple of questions. Number one, I think I may have asked you or the previous commissioner this question before, but I don't remember what the answer was. The budget lists four different, four different line items listed as bonuses. Can you explain what that is?
The bonus items? That's the educational bonuses, similar to the Quinn bill for the contracted union employees for Local 648 and the Fire Chiefs Association.
So that's, I'm assuming that was collectively bargained, it's in a contract?
Absolutely.
My next question is shift differential. What is that exactly?
The firefighters work a rotating shift, and that's a contractual payment that they receive for the rotating shift.
That's in the contract as well?
That's in the contract as well. I may be missing something of what the counselor's saying. I'm sorry.
That was my question. That was, those were my two questions. I appreciate it.
Counselor Fenton, thank you, Counselor Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner, regarding the shift differential, I recall that when we were talking about the Brave Act and the implications that that would have on the police and fire in particular departments, that I think it was you that raised, and others who raised some substantial concerns about the impact that the shift differential, how that would interplay with the, with the implementation of the Brave Act. Can you speak a little bit to that and how that's going?
I don't recall how shift differential is going to affect it. That wasn't one of my major concerns. One of the major concerns was the increased overtime that was going to be associated with that with all discussions that we have with Counselor Hurst. I don't think shift differential was discussed in that.
So the way the shift differential works is that there's, how many, how many, how many shifts are there currently?
There are four groups that work 42 hours a week. They work two 10-hour days, two 14-hour nights, followed by four days off, and it continually rotates. The shift differential is usually for the night shift part of the rotation.
But it's, so it's, so does that mean it's four days on, four days off?
Two days, no, well, no. It's two days, two nights, four days off. So you could call it four on, four off. You work two four days, followed by two 14-hour nights, followed by four fours off.
Okay. I don't know why I seem to recall that some of the apprehension was around the next collective bargaining session and whether or not we would go to more reduced.
I can, I can speak to that. That's a different question. That was if we ever went to a 24-hour shift.
Right.
If we worked 24-hour shifts, then it had to do with the Brave Act, because you get 24 hours off for each day you take off for the Brave Act. So then instead of missing a 10-hour day, you were missing a 24-hour day.
I see. But that has nothing to do with the shift differential?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none. Thank you, Commissioner. We will now move to Commissioner Clapproot and the police.
Thank you, counselors.
Thank you.
Good evening, counselors.
Good evening.
Counselors, the Springfield Police Department's fiscal year 2021 budget is a request of $50 million in funds. That'll take care of 600 personnel, which are 512 sworn, and 88 civilians. It funds my highest priorities for officer safety and training. More specifically, it helps such programs as peer-to-peer training, which is used to address the well-being of our officers. We didn't start that. It's going well. We have been training about 20 officers. We didn't start that. It's going well. We have been training about 20 officers in peer-to-peer. Peer-to-peer is specifically for officers who are experiencing some mental health difficulties, and they find it more beneficial to talk to other people in law enforcement than to go outside for help. So from the peer-to-peer group, they can be referred to whatever help they need. Good officers start their physical and mental well-being, and as you know, and as I've spoke with you before, times right now are tough. The budget helps fund training for the body-worn cameras. The cameras will be used as a tool to strengthen ties with the community and help identify early warning signs of officer abuse and neglect. If that's happening, we'll see it and we'll act quickly. There's a lot of audit and a lot of testing involved in that. I believe most of you saw the display we had for you last week. Right now, we have over 40 cameras on the street. We continue to train 20 officers a week. We are expected to have the department fully trained by the end of the year, along with our officers. We've also trained members of the lot department, city clerk's office, district attorney's office. They've all been trained in this process. Not only will it help with community relations, it's strengthened police officer behavior, but it should help with court cases down at 50 State Street. The budget does fund training and upgrades to our TASER system. We're upgrading to the seventh version of TASER because of numerous success stories that have come out of using the non-lethal tool. The department is seeing greater compliance when people are threatened with a TASER system rather than any other type of action that we can take. And we've had less citizens' complaints because of these weapons. The funding will go towards running the academy for 40 officers, managing a fleet of over 200 vehicles, upgrades to that TASER system, ensuring buildings and vehicles are kept clean while we work through a new normal with coronavirus. My budget request was cut $2 million affecting the modernization of some training and IIU records, records that are needed for when an officer is under investigation. It reduces funding for some training, riot helmets, 15 vehicles, 12 cameras to be placed in hotspots throughout the city. Additionally, four positions were reduced, three cadets and one sergeant. Overall, considering the times we're in, this is a tight budget, but I believe we can live with it in it and pending no additional cuts. I will share some stats with the council. A comparison of fiscal year 2018 to 2019 is showing a 35% increase in shots fired, shot spotter calls, 17% increase in gun arrests, and a seven-and-a-half increase in your 911 calls. Last year, 2019, we had 264,301 calls per service. Over 30,000 of those calls were quality of life. We dealt with 494 overdoses. Year-to-date, Part I crime, which is your more serious crime, is up 4% right now. But as you're seeing throughout the country, major cities are starting to spike in serious and violent crime. So we've been able to maintain most of the programs even through COVID. We maintained a C-3 unit. They are still in Mason Square, Forest Park, and the North End. The North End C-3 unit has made some wonderful arrests and kept a lid on the drag racing that tends to start in that area of the city. We've maintained one ordinance officer for every sector. That ordinance officer goes to the B management meetings. They're well-received and well-lighted, and the C-3 and the ordinance get together for community events. Okay, I think we're good from our end, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos, followed by Counselor Whitfield.
Mr. President, and thank you, Commissioner, for that presentation. I have a few questions related to the line items. My first question is relative to overtime. We're budgeting $1.8 million for overtime, which is equal to what it was last year. Can you explain why we budget so much for overtime? Does it have to do with staffing? Or what is the purpose for budgeting for $2 million of overtime?
Yeah, Counselor, most of that is staffing, and that's because, like, the details we're putting out now for fireworks, the details I put out for Forest Park, your bikes in Forest Park, your Enduros downtown for events, whenever we have an event that needs motorcycles or officers, all that comes out of my overtime budget. A lot of times, the squads are held. If the squads are, day squads held over for an evening event or evenings are held over, has certain things play out, that all comes out of my overtime budget.
Is there any way to lower the cost on overtime?
I wish. I try. We try hard. We, I try to keep the squads up so that I'm not paying the callback. The officers, and they become nervous for their safety if we don't set out a certain number of officers per shift. Sometimes through training, we were trying to rearrange things and let people train during their working hours so they don't create a callback. But with all the training and certifications they have to go through and the numbers I have right now, that's why we strive hard to somehow get ahead with the numbers so that I don't need the callbacks. And as events come up, I could use that to the working personnel. We've never caught up with it.
Just a final comment on that point. You know, it would be a lot more cost-efficient if we were to hire more officers rather than pay our existing officers overtime. So whatever we can do to make that happen, that would be preferable. My next question is in terms of the shift differential. What is that exactly? And why are we paying shift differential?
Shift differential is mainly paid out to our crime analysis unit and other civilians on that work nights and weekends. So we staff crime analysis almost on a 24/7 basis. We have detention attendants who work down in the booking document, booking doc, female detention attendants. They get shift if and weekend pay as well. So none of it is sworn, Counselor, that civilian shift differential?
Not collectively bargained. They're not a bargaining unit?
It's not.
It's just, in finance, when you work a night or an overnight or a weekend, most places have a shift differential that pays you slightly more than your hourly rate. And so that's what's happening with this one. So it's not bargaining with any of the folks that are doing it. It's just when they're called in and they're working an overnight on a Saturday. With Sunday, they get a different rate of pay than they do if they're called in on a weekday.
My next question is relative to weapons and ammunition. There's a 98.4% increase from last year. Is that the tasers that you were referring to?
Correct.
Yes, correct.
And you mentioned earlier that your proposed budget was cut by $2 million, and that affected training. I didn't catch what kind of training you were referring to.
We had slated some natural training, and that was specifically for the downtown officers to do some training with the casino, security, mass mutual security, training like that, any mandatory training. We're managing to get done with some of the extra training. There was some training as far as the motorcycles go, if I wanted to expand that. And we're not going to do that. I'm going to make sure that everything that's mandated by the department is fulfilled.
So most of which is cut out of the profit were capital requests that we can pursue other grants and other funding sources, vehicles, computer equipment stuff, those things. So that's why it was requested, but we removed it to look for other funding alternatives.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Ramos. Counselor Whitfield?
President, Commissioner, thank you for your overview. I do want to commend you on the job that you are doing with the body-worn cameras. I'm looking forward to seeing the outcomes once they've been implemented for a longer time, but the demonstration was great. So I thank you for that. My question is, is there specific funding that targets gun violence?
Gun violence?
Yes, gun violence.
Shanning Grant. We do have the Shanning Grant. It's not specifically gun violence. It's gang violence. So we do get a chunk of money from the Shanning Grants. And what we do is we make the supervisors who are going to go out and use a detail on the Shanning Grant, set a proposal up, they send it to me, and they send it to finance, what they're going to target, what they're going to do, and how much money they need to spend from the grant itself. Most of the supervisors now have been doing it long enough that they know to just hit the areas where we have a high ratio of gang and gun violence. Like, say, there's a lot of initiatives that are done in the school, high-union area, where they specifically target gang and gun violence. Yes, Counselor.
Thank you. I would like to learn more about those initiatives and also maybe discuss with you some additional initiatives that I'm aware of to specifically target gun violence, and we can do that offline. My next question is, I know that you had to restructure the department and take the C-3 officers because of COVID-19 and change their responsibility. Are they back to C-3 responsibility, or no?
They are not back yet, Counselor. I was able to just take one from each C-3 unit. So I would say September 1, they can go back. That one officer can go back, and hopefully I could maintain the C-3 units. What happened September 1 is the recruits that came out will have finished their rotation. They will have gone through a lot of different divisions in the department, and they should be ready to go to midnight to 8, which would slide everybody over, and then I could put the one officer back in the C-3. But I was able to maintain six officers in Mason Square, Forest Park, and the North End C-3.
Thank you very much. Because we have, you know I love C-3, and I am a big proponent for C-3, and I think it really works to decrease the crime in all those areas. And we have started our meetings back for like, this is going to be our fourth week. And Sue Haley's been great. She's a wonderful asset as well, distributing information. But I know that the community residents and the organization feel secure hearing from the officers and also voicing their concerns, and they haven't been able to do that. And so that's why I asked the question.
Did you, and you lost your state trooper, the Mass State Police were short, and they pulled the state troopers from us. And I'm hoping now I have good conversations with Colonel Mason. I'm going to try to work to get them back also.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner Clappert, good to see you again. Thank you. Just, I do have several questions, but let me start with the canine. Looking at the line items, it says canine supplies. It went to 94,000. It went up 61,000. Can you speak to that? Present the line item.
Myself being a proponent of the canines and a German Shepherd advocate, we have added three dogs. One was actually a replacement that we weren't going to bring back. The goal was to have three canines in each shift. So I now have three on midnight to 8. I have three on the 412, and I have three on days. We also send all the canines to be cross-trained so they can do two different things. If you have a crowd canine, they can either become a nitrate certification, or they can become narcotics certification. We have a much more greater need for the narcotics certification, so I do send them to the narcotics. And I also have put a canine in C-3. I put an officer from the Mason Square group with a canine to help out C-3 officers should they need it also.
But those supplies, are these supplies for food, for bed?
Food and.
Let me say supply.
Yeah, the dog supplies would be food and vet bills and equipment. And they also would include the kennels that by law, a police canine has to have. It's a certain kind of prey with a heating blanket in because they must, they live outside. They do not live inside with their eaters. So there's some qualifications, and there's a pen and fencing that goes with that also.
I'm sorry. So did you say the bed visits, is that included in that or not? The bed visits going to the veterinarian?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm sure you know that the Animal Boston Road Hospital is closing.
Yes.
And I believe we take them there. Where are we going to be sending the dogs now?
Yeah, we dealt with that when they closed the emergency at night. And Sergeant Flanagan, who's in charge, has been going around with different vets. We've been looking at different prices and making sure we have somebody available for the dogs. They also have their own Narloxxo, which is pretty much like the Narcan for humans. Each canine can obtain a canister of that because the dogs can, if fentanyl and other drugs are involved, the dogs can start to overdose.
Okay, all right, thank you. I asked, I myself, I'm a big dog lover, and that did catch my eye. I just want to move on to the other question if I may. Core time, I notice that core time is down significantly, down 72,000, 73,000 to go on the loss. And I'm just trying to compare that. Let me post a whole question. We are getting, I think we're getting 40 new guys onto the force, a new class. I'm glad to see that we're spending less core time, but yeah, the overtime was not affected. Would you think that the new guys will help to decrease the overtime, as it might have done with the core time?
I think.
I don't know if I was clear with the question.
Yeah, I think once the new guys get into the swing of things, and if I'm able to have another academy, that should cut down on the overtime. I think what's going to cut down on core time are your body-worn camera videos. They should also save us a good chunk in the core time, which you're not going to need the officer testimony as much. And with the courts being closed since sometime in April, we've saved a big chunk of change because the officers have been going down.
Okay, all right. Now, the lastly, Commissioner, the $800,000 for the shooting range. We posed a question to Superintendent Sullivan a while ago, and he did give us some explanation, including that it wasn't safe for the officers. I do know, you mentioned to me in the past, that currently they're fish practicing down in the basement. I would love to hear your perspective on it, and why is it unsafe?
Yeah, it became a big necessity. OSHA will certify our gun range down in the basement. The gun range downstairs at 130 Pearl Street, the ventilation is horrible, and the lead buildup after all the years of using it as an indoor range, it's rendered it kind of very inefficient and unhealthy. You can actually go down there and shoot 50 rounds of ammunition and blow your nose, and it's gray. Blame matter will come out. It's unhealthy. I would opt for an outdoor range. We have it timed to West Springfield. I have it timed to Dagewang or Ludlow. The problem being is to qualify, the Springfield police officers shoot so many rounds in order to qualify for the MPTC standards. They don't want us there. It's too much lead. It's too much brass. It's too much ammunition. So because police officers are required to shoot now twice a year, we need somewhere to go. It's imperative that your officers be properly certified. So it came about, and I looked at Smith and Wesson, and I looked at it with Mr. Plant and others, and it's just a nice area. It's a beautiful range. It was not being used. I think he was going to knock it down, or he's going to do something else with it. The ventilation system is going to be wonderful in there. There's three ranges together with the entrance to these ranges, able to take vehicles. So to me, the best training in any type of weapon, especially handguns or shotguns, is simulations. It's playing it out. It's having somebody yelling. It's running behind a car and shooting at a target. Everybody is going through actual scenarios for combat shooting. It makes sense to do it that way, and this facility allows for that. I can put a cruiser in there. I can make it nighttime. I can make it windy. We can do different things down there. It'll be a great facility, and it'll be a real advantage for training officers in Springfield.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. Mr. President, I have time for one more question? One and a half? Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. Mr. President, I have time for one more question. One and a half?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner, just to round it up, my last two questions. I see here that we're going to get some capital funding for, among many things, defibrillators. Is that for, every cruiser has a defibrillator, or are they just replacements?
They're replacements. Every cruiser now goes out with a defibrillator, or, and there are defibrillators throughout the building, the station, and throughout different offices that we have, and that would be an upgrade and replacement. The batteries, they have a lifespan, like
Right, right. I think it's five years, five or seven years.
It's been a while since we've gotten it, so.
But I know that that's critical. I'm glad to see that the cruisers have them, and that's very good. My compliments on that. And finally, just to round it up, I see there's funding for six square miles of shot, shot spotter gunfire detection system. And so relating to the to the horrible problem we have with the fireworks, have they been damaged? Do we need extra money to fix them? Where are we with that? How is that affecting the, the, the actual function of the shot, of the shot spotter?
The shot, the shot spotter system has not been damaged by the fireworks. What's happened is Sergeant Sullivan has kept tweaking it so that the shot spotter picks it up here. It's quickly sent to California where the shot is analyzed and quickly sent back to us as to whether or not what caliber it was. Was it a backfire? Was it a firework? So you can manipulate the sensitivity so that we're not getting all the firework calls. We're trying to specifically get the shots themselves and try to stay away from every two seconds shot spotter going off.
Resource, resource.
The sensitivity's been, been calibrated on them to try to slowly pick up from 22 caliber on up. And so, so, so.
Sergeant Sullivan's a great guy. I'm glad he's heading that up. So thank you, Commissioner.
Just don't tell him that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Davila, Counselor Allen. I see your hand has been up in the queue for a while. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Cheryl, really just have one question that I can think of at the moment, and that is, could you do a little explanation on the Behavioral Health Network initiative that, that takes place in certain of your calls?
Sure. We knew that was needed to me because we were taking so many crisis, people in crisis calls. So it was actually a brainchild of Sergeant Elliott and Captain Tarter. We have sent several officers, and we keep sending them wherever we can for one week training in crisis management. And it was sponsored by Behavioral Health Network over on Liberty Street. They were training officers in how to recognize people who are going through mental health crises. And through talking to them, they came up with the idea of actually having one of the V H N workers go with us because a lot of our calls that were going on, these people already have a counselor. They've already had help. And we don't know it when we first get there. And it takes a little bit of time to discern what the problem is and what the issue is. And this has been working out great where the V H N worker puts the name in a laptop computer and says, you've been seen by Dr. So-and-so. Have you been taking this medication? Do you wish to go in? And then once the officers have the scene calmed down, when there's no threat of violence, V H N can respond with that person over to Liberty Street, which is a lot better than a cruiser standing by Bay State ER or Mercy ER for hours trying to get the person seen. It's working out so great that we put somebody on 4:00 to midnight, and I'm looking to put one on weekends now. They have to respond initially with the officers, but a lot of times, the clinician will be able to tell the officers, you can go back into service. I got it. I'm all set. The V H N workers, I asked them, and they said it's about 70% of the calls, they would be requesting a cruiser anyway. Because you never know, a lot of these times, especially if it's a question of being off medication. But it's been a good program. I've had calls from other chiefs to ask me about it. Other towns have inquired about it. I give them the model and how we set it up with V H N, and it's working out very well.
That's great. I'm glad you're, glad you're, glad you're doing that. It sounds like it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none. Commissioner, I just had a quick question regarding the line item for the overtime budget. I mean, not the overtime, the the training, seminars, education and training, which looks like it went down 58,000 for this year. Is that accurate? Am I reading that correctly?
It was cut. That's accurate. Yes, Counselor.
It was cut. So I, I think it would be great to get the information that I sent via email, just so I can kind of get the breakdown as to what training people are receiving, what, how many
In regards to your question, I answered my part of it, and now it's Counselor Prapula that's working on it for you.
Okay, all right. So we, I just didn't know. But I'm looking at it now, and it looks like $389 per officer. And so I don't know if my breakdown is correct, but I don't know what that entails, whether that's sufficient or not sufficient. There's a reason why I asked for the school department's kind of breakdown as well. I know as a council, we were asking for $1,000, I think, per coun, per counselor. And we certainly don't do the type of work that, that you all do and probably, you know, don't need anywhere near the same amount of training as, as you all do. So it's a little low, but I'd love to get the breakdown.
Yeah, most of our certifications and things that we have to call like the shooting is done on duty. So we do a lot of the qualification training while they're working, and that would include in-service and the shooting and everything. So a lot of that is just while you're working. That, that's why the OT budget is up a little bit, because if I'm short and I never really get ahead of the the game with personnel, then I replace the person that needs the training with overtime. But it's not, it's not affecting the training budget.
Got it. Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, everyone. TJ, thank you for sticking around. Since I do not see any further questions in the queue, counselors, we will conclude this meeting, and I will see you next Monday at good, I think it's at 5 o'clock, but I'll send you guys out an email reminder. Sorry, so many meetings that are happening. So I'll send you out an email reminder. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thanks. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.